Attending.
Who's that?
Sharon. Which, yes, or the capital R. No, what's that in that book?
I'll be on guest.
Bobby, Miss Yarzaree, look at that.
Louis.
Hi.
You're sitting in my seat.
You want to sit in?
Oh, well, I said you every time. No, I'll stay, I'm late.
Actually, I'm sitting in the mayor's seat.
You wish.
You wish. No, it was just.
We're just starting.
With the capital R. With the one oh five four three, I think, right? This is again, yeah, one oh five four three. Forgot it, capital R, it's one oh five. And.
Ms. Yarzaree, Mrs. Yarzaree, what do you, for Miss Yarzaree?
And I'll be Miss Yarzaree. You have stuff in your mailbox, Ms. Yarzaree.
Check.
Yeah.
That's all I need.
You can count that down?
I have that.
That's capital.
I don't know if you want it, it's what Charles sent this afternoon, I just.
Oh, this afternoon, this.
That's what's actually up on the screen, it's probably easier to see.
The analyst of master, it's you got a one oh five four three, right?
Uh, no, uh.
That's for the wifi. Are you on the wifi yet?
I think it's, uh, was it either one three three regarding with capital R? Or regarding one two two.
No, it's a habit.
If with password.
Yeah.
Anybody who's gonna come in here. That's it, I was completely wrong. Um. You see what I, what it says? Capital.
Which one, did I get a line?
Yeah, regarding the. And B O M S F.
Yeah.
So.
Good.
To. If I can skip.
I feel very jostled. Loud.
I guess.
Yeah. I talked to. Like at first.
It's going to come on.
No, I haven't, I didn't. I said, anyone's.
I, I seriously, I could turn the arrow off, I wasn't trying to even overstep my, my own boundaries. But they're saying, if you wanted me to.
If you guys want, I'll turn it back on.
And I don't mind sending that amen.
I'll, I'll follow up.
One with two terms. Oh, okay, I'll let you know that.
Yeah.
Follow up, and I actually.
Yeah, I just wanted to get goodbye.
I actually have no arms on mine, because they fell off.
Someone just told me the order.
Of the call. I'll make, I'll make the book.
Oh, I'll make a motion to follow, um, April eighteenth, twenty twenty four, work session, budget work sessions are ordered.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Nor are you motion to the motion, thank you.
Can we see, we catch the tariffs?
Well, I'm, I'm sharing the.
Alright.
I mean, while the problem is, it's in order to see the sheet. I can.
Can you see it?
No, well, no, it's good.
If you move to her, if you open it up and move it to the other side, maybe you can see. But I don't know.
There they are.
Do you want, do you know that? There you all see. So we're doing. Y'all want it, you see?
Well, if we, if we vote, she's gotta be able to vote, right?
Yeah, well, you can hear her, but and also we have a forum.
Well, actually, um.
Yeah.
Right, but we can post question books.
No, that's why she couldn't.
Actually. Yeah, actually, I think typically, you don't need to take any post that, because. Without.
This is a meeting.
Yeah.
I'm gonna post a meeting.
There you go.
Yeah.
This is a conversation, correct?
Yep.
Okay.
I tried to set it, sorry.
Well, I guess, you know, they're, they want us to start, or?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I mean, there have been a number of items that we have, uh, discussed over the, say, the last, uh, three weeks, uh, in terms of the budget, uh, some increases, some decreases, uh, in terms of the, uh, items, uh, or decrease, you'll see the, uh, they're identified in the, uh, friends, in the proposed, uh, change, increase, decrease column, and, uh, what the overall adjusted totals. Uh, in the, uh, original, in the tender budget, we identified thirty seven five for one part timer, uh, in the adjusted, it's eighteen seven fifty each for two part timers, so that's a distinction without a difference.
Right.
Next, we have, uh, uh, the HR salary bookkeeper, obviously. Um, yeah, unfortunately, we had, yep, speaker passed away, and, uh, we're, we're replacing the position. It's a union position with the salaries, yes. Accurate.
Will it be that ninety seven?
No, it's gonna be sixty one.
Sixty one, okay.
Yeah. Um, the, uh, we, the, the chief, uh, emailed about, uh, the, uh, since we're increasing the complement of K nine officers to two, there's the, uh, the stipend for that, uh, because they actually care at the dog, um, twenty four seven. And there's the, uh, radio equipment and the tasers, which we just needed to bump up slightly. Uh, so, your overall increase there was, um, you know, uh, we had seventy eight hundred for one K nine, now it's sixteen six forty, uh, eighty one hundred for, uh, radio equipment, went up to twelve thousand, uh, forty two thousand originally for tasers, and it goes up to forty three thousand nine hundred, so not, not, that's not a tremendous change. Uh, the ambulance building improvements, I think you've all seen the email from Jason Capalvo asking for an increase. Um, and so we put that in there. Uh, then we have a, uh, uh, because of the retirement of our, our employee, we're able to realize some savings in the new year, so, uh, what was budget is eighty four five ninety nine, it's gonna be re-budgeted down to sixty two nine eighty five, so there's a twenty one thousand dollar savings there. Um, we've met, uh, myself, Jason, and, uh, Mary yesterday about, uh, some additional, um, uh, assistance room, uh, it wasn't a rec superintendent, it's a rec supervisor.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
Yeah. So, uh, with a, a yearly salary of eighty thousand, but bringing it in mid-year at forty thousand, so it'll be forty thousand, but, you know, our hope would be that, uh, you would see increased revenues to offset the cost.
And that's partly because we're, because keeps is gone, so we have that space again.
Yeah.
There's space for programming.
That's correct.
So. Is some of the staff there, because I know that some people, um, passed some civil service exam, or is the, is one of those staff persons being bumped up? And, um, and, uh, then maybe hiring another person, or?
So, um, my understanding, based on my discussion, you're, I don't think, uh, the other members of the department had the requisite experience to sit for the test when it was last offered, which I believe was last year, so they, it's, I don't believe, it's not, it's not.
What was the, what was the test that they just recently took?
Uh, I think it was, uh, rec. Rec leader.
Rec leader, yeah.
Yeah, rec leader. Yeah. Uh, it's just one of the, uh, miseries or, uh, civil service.
I took, there was a civil service workshop, um, offered by the new commissioner.
Did, did you learn any more than you did before?
A little bit, but I, I, it's a little, I, I understood what the reaching was, and.
Yeah.
Canvassing was, you know, like, I, I felt like I was getting some of it.
Yeah. Um, now we have the, you know, remove the ballpark attendant, uh, we removed that twenty five hundred dollars for the Sheldrake environmental review, uh, we removed the, uh, expense from four keys, which is about ten thousand dollars, but there's also a twenty five thousand dollar loss of revenue that we'll see later. Um, then there were some, uh, uh, decreases, uh, some increases in various, uh, uh, lines that, uh, for celebrations, all totaled about twenty five thousand dollars, I think.
That's a little, it's a little, yeah, it's a little more because, no, yeah, if you total that line, that's what it would be.
Yeah.
The most important one that Jason and, um, and Chief are concerned about is the carnival.
Okay.
That's the biggest one.
Yeah, I mean, that's, you know, I, I don't wanna get into specifics of our policing efforts at the carnival, but it's not always, you know, uniformed officers there.
I think the carnival on Fourth of July were the two important ones that Jason pointed out, he said other ones that he can work with.
Yep.
Um.
Uh, for planning department, we, uh, have the, the part-time, additional part timer to assist with, you know, the administration of the department. Uh, and then there are some minor.
I got it, I got the exact numbers on the current box.
Yeah, so there's some minor changes to the box. Uh, so the, uh, the revenue, sorry, expense increases total ninety six thousand, uh, three hundred eighty six dollars, based on the discussions we had over the last month.
Ninety six. Decrease?
Uh, increase, increase.
And what's the increase?
What?
Sitting now, I guess.
Okay. Okay, so, well, you, you don't take that seventy, you keep that seventy thousand.
That's up to everybody, I, I think we said we didn't talk to James.
Yeah.
I didn't get a chance to. I didn't get a chance to talk to James.
Okay, so with the, on the revenue side, um, you know, we have the boat storage fee that we're proposing to reduce by fifty thousand. Uh, the harbor coast fees are increased by three thousand, uh, obviously, we discussed keeps. Um, the rental inspection, uh, that was, uh, we reduced that by a hundred thousand. Uh, you know, we'd still like to do the program, I think we have enough, uh, rationale to consider it and not start at day one, have a start at least some point during this.
Uh, but we're not, I mean, we're just, we're, we're only counting on fifty thousand bucks, likely to get more.
If we, if we, if we do it, we will get more.
But.
It depends when we do it.
There's also an increase in staff.
Yeah.
So it's not necessarily the revenue stream.
Yeah.
Because we're gonna.
Yeah.
For the boat store?
No.
Oh, for the.
So, so raises the question, are we charging them?
We're not charging anything right now.
Oh.
So.
We're not doing, we don't have a law that allows us to do rent inspections.
So that's, I think that's.
So that's, that's, uh, that's on, when, when does that come up?
You have to put it, we have to put it on the agenda for it to come up.
Okay.
Or put it back on the.
Yeah. Let me, let me write that down.
Okay, um, I think we still, uh, we still need to discuss the street opening fees with James, so we can maybe follow up a little at some point over the next day or so. Um, then, uh, we have the, the final calculation of the, uh, the library, uh, bond revenue.
But that's, I had to correct that.
That's a water, but it's a wash, pretty much, yeah, it's actually, um, we're not, like, a two thousand
dollar reduction.
So that, that's with those, uh, changes on the revenues, that's an overall decrease of two hundred forty eight, uh, six hundred fifty nine, two forty eight, six five nine.
That, that, then, before they have driven into a, into a ditch, um, we were talking about, um, uh, charging them for collecting the taxes, right?
That was a conversation, I think Jerry was starting, possibly had, I think that was something.
Yeah, well, we, we had, we had that discussion, uh, it never progressed, I, once with the thing with the, the, I'll call it the unpleasantness happened, I think the, the board didn't wanna pursue it in, in, at that point.
But now that we have it resolved, shouldn't, shouldn't we revisit it again?
Possibly, maybe, like, I, I, I don't, I personally wanna do it right after, they, they're still trying to get their sudden head above board.
I mean.
Okay.
All it means is if we decided to.
They, they would.
Try to, they, they.
They would increase their tax.
Taxes, so it's, same piece, so basically, we're, the villages, the villages increasing our budget by having the live, having residents pay and increase library, so doesn't actually.
Well, I, I get that, but at least it's, it's, it's.
And they passed their budget.
That are, so.
So it'll be next year.
They passed, yeah, they passed their budget in summer.
So, yeah, so it'll be next.
So even if we were gonna do this, it wouldn't affect.
Yeah, they, they, I, I budgeted. I mean, just for clarity, I, I think, I think it makes sense, but that's just my.
Well, I mean, I always, yeah, I've always felt like, I think I agree with, you know, trustee Yarzaree. Uh, if you're doing like a multi-year program, we're of something, like, uh, if you're, let's say you're doing a massive downtown revitalization, like, I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend increasing parking fees while you're, you're, I mean, like, once they see the nice new, you know, shiny bubble.
Yeah.
That's when you, you would, you could, yeah, people would expect it. Uh, I wouldn't necessarily, like, do it now.
Right.
Uh, so where that leaves us is, uh, you know, in, uh, revised appropriations of forty eight million five hundred ninety one thousand. Um, and, uh, they. Says.
Where are we now, hang on? Oh, yeah, I see, I see, yeah, you got it.
The, those mouses finicky, um, which, um, based on the non-pro per tax revenues and, uh, appropriate, some appropriated fund balance, uh, would acquire a levy of twenty nine million three hundred forty thousand one hundred twenty two dollars or, uh, an increase, uh, in the levy of four point six six percent. Uh, obviously, that's, that's the one million three oh five growth is higher than the nine hundred eighty thousand dollar allowance by the tax cap, so, um, if there is a, if, if the board is comfortable with this budget, you can elect to adopt the law allowing you to exceed the tax cap and adopt a budget like this.
And what's the alternative?
The alternative is if you, you have to either make cuts or, you know, properly more fund balance, or find additional revenues. But, you know, trying to cut, you know, you're, you know, but, you know, almost three hundred twenty five thousand dollars, yeah. Most of our, most of our expenses are personal related, you know, police, public works, parks, recreation. So. It's.
So.
Just to add, I'm sorry, these were from my notes, so I'm, I hope, I hope it matches everything that you guys, I've tried to go take notes by the meaning of everything, but, so this was what was discussed, I, so just in case you want to just review it, and if I missed anything you think that discussed, just let me know, we can.
So we could, we could take more out of a, out of reserve or, or, um.
Oh, I don't know that we can take more out of reserve, because we're, I mean, we're, um, we're taking a lot more out of reserves than we've ever taken before.
How much more?
So, last year.
Hang on, how much more?
Last year, we took out six fifty, which was our highest to date.
Six hundred fifty thousand.
Now, six hundred thousand. I said, yeah, and, and now it's nine hundred ninety nine cents.
And now, on top of the six hundred, or?
No.
Or six hundred, so already nine.
We returned, we returned to six fifty, right?
Well. No? So, we, we don't, the, we do not know at this point what our, uh, what our end, end of year budget will look like. I suspect that we will be able to come in positive and, uh, add to the fund balance. Uh, but, you know, one of the things that, one of the rationale that I put forward about using additional surplus was the increases in the healthcare and the, um, pension, specifically the pension.
It's what?
It, it, I believe that next year, it's a one shot, but we also believe that next year.
Okay.
We should realize a reduction in pension, because, uh, going into this bu, uh, going, for this budget year, twenty four, sorry, twenty four, twenty five, the value of, our payment is based on what the pension was worth, March thirty one, two thousand twenty three. And, uh, the pension as of March, I think it was something like two hundred forty eight billion dollars.
Uh, this year.
And, no, in last year, this year, uh, they, I never, they don't release, they're not gonna release the number by, like, you know, June or July, when they audit it. But my guess is it's gonna be somewhere at two hundred sixteen to two hundred sixty five billion. So thi, this was a, a, a significant, uh, uh, it was a significantly good year for the pension. So, I, I believe that next year, we will see pension relief, uh, based on the value of the pension.
And, and, and we've got, and we've got some very conservative estimates on revenue that, that we feel confident we could, it will exceed.
Um, yeah, I, I, no, I, I, you know, so the, the sales tax, you know, we've been making, uh, you know, one point three million per quarter.
Yeah.
So I, I feel comfortable with the, with our, our, with our estimate. Um, the, uh, building permits, uh, we're not posing any increases, but I, you know, we're still processing lots and lots of permits, but with the increase in the, uh, mortgage tax, I think that is going to disincentivize people from taking out mortgages to invest in their properties. So I, my, I believe that the.
Refinance.
Yeah, so I, I have a suspicion that the building permit revenue, we're not gonna see that, you know, tremendous year-to-year increase like we did the last two years, just because of external financial conditions.
Despite, despite the, the, you know, the real estate pressure, I mean.
But there's, there's, there's.
Yes, this is, this is people who are refinancing.
Yeah.
Or versus.
Yeah. I, I, I think at some point, it would probably reach a, a sense of normalcy, because the mortgage rates now.
Yeah.
They're, you know, they're higher than they were, but historically speaking, they're, you know, where they were for most of our lives.
Um, there's not much inventory, so there's not much turnover.
Yeah.
Not much.
As I said, I, I said, I think, I think at some point, you know, people will, it's not even adjusting to the new normal, it's be adjusting to the old normal.
So, so, uh, oh, you're presuming.
No, go ahead.
You're, you're presuming that what, what we, what, that we'll probably be able to put everything back this year, but next year, maybe not?
I, I, I wouldn't, I, I don't think we'll see the same, uh, we've had, you know, tremendous increase in the revenue, the building permit revenue the last couple of years, um, I, I just, um, I'm a little bearish on that item.
So you're saying, what in essence, what you're saying is, even if, as Louis suggesting, taking stuff out of the fund balance, and Nora always said it was nine, we're up to nine sixty, we should be wary or cautious about taking out too much, because the next following year, it may not, the, putting money back into it may not be as much as we think it will be.
No, no, I, I think I was, I was, I was, I was talking specifically to some of the revenues.
Um.
Um, I said, I'm, I think you need to be a bit conservative by nature.
Okay.
With that item, just because, I mean, we've had spikes in years past, um, you know, what also, you know, makes that number spike is we could have a significant development coming along, and that one permit for a, uh, a bigger development could be a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars, um, I don't know if we have any of those on the horizon right now.
And, um, we don't have anything in here for flood relief, that's one of the things we talked about, that we didn't put it, didn't put in, so we haven't added any.
I think, uh, the only reason why we don't have anything for flood relief, well, unless we're just setting aside money, you know, but we haven't picked a project. And I said, that's one of the biggest things, is like, I don't even, I don't feel, I, I don't feel comfortable just putting money away without picking a project.
But if we're going to, if we're go, if we are gonna raid the reserve fund for this.
I'd rather raid the reserve, yeah.
That's where, that's.
No, I'd rather raid the reserve fund for the flood, yeah, that.
So, I, I wanna be sure that we're not, that we're, that we're in compliance with our, with our, uh, policy, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I think the policy provides latitude to you, um, and, and, and your independent-minded elected officials.
But we have.
It, it's, 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 it's a guide, and I think.
But if we go below thirty percent, we have to come up with a plan, when we do that, to replenish it within two years.
Yes.
And so that plan isn't, um, we're guaranteed, well, the plan isn't, if we, if, if we take out more money of the reserve fund for this budget, and we're below thirty percent, the plan isn't gonna be, and then we're gonna fund flood mitigation projects with it, because that's continuing to diminish.
I, I, let me ask you. I always think this way, for what? If we don't.
Well, the fund balance policy is something that, that affects our, our, all of our ratings, we have, it, it's something that, that's looked at in our audit. It's looked at by the controller's office, is, you know, it's like, basically, it's good financial management.
Yeah, what, what, what were the consequences?
The consequences.
The owner asked that I, um, asking about river maintenance for flood mitigation.
Yeah.
So, so we haven't put that in.
So is that like the, what you, Sharon, are you saying like the dredging, like what the, you know, making sure that we have money for, um, the cleaning of the rivers and the dredging, is there anything else?
She's texting me, she can't really speak.
No, I got you.
Um.
Sort of. Well, I'm, or even like, uh, let's say the project that, um, uh, Kate came up with, with the, the.
It's not the agreement, yeah.
Okay, I didn't know, that's what, I was just trying to figure out.
And Kate's got another project.
I know.
So, but, you know, part of, you know, part of the, what, what the, the bond reading agencies look at, there are a number of factors that's, yeah. Uh, the, you know, what your fund balance is, also, you know, the, the political will of the elected officials to, you know, address the issues as they come along.
Having a vendor clean up the silt piles, that was one, instead of DPW.
Uh, well, that, it was both, because DPW would focus on.
Then having DPW follow up with each cleaning within two hundred feet of each bridge.
I agree, I agree with that, I agree with that.
In other words, how are we, how are we paying for the continued
maintenance?
Maintenance of what, what we did this year? Um.
So we didn't, it isn't even that, it's the kinds of things, like, there's, uh, uh, just almost like a little bit of, 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 no, of like, um, a, a little peninsula that's, that's, that's developed around a dead tree near the railroad bridge, like, that's one of the things the Army Corps noted, that that should be removed. I feel like there's.
Yeah, so.
Kinds of.
And we avoided that because everybody thought that was gonna be a, the, uh.
Well, well, part of it also, you know, there were certain areas that are covered under our permit, uh, and, uh, there are other areas I think we'd like to address, that we'd have to, uh, have our permit expanded. And I spoke with, actually received a call from, uh, JT Cleary, uh, yesterday, because, you know, they're, they're almost finished with the county PR project, they should, they think that we finished in like two months. And they're trying to line up their work and, but, uh, uh, I spoke to Gino on Tuesday. Uh, mentioned that, you know, just getting that process has been a six-month process to get the permit expanded. Uh, I think we still have the ability to.
But that, the specific ones that the Army Corps is noting were with, were adjacent to the bridge.
Yeah.
They're, they're well within the.
Yeah, but that, 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 those bridges weren't included as part of our, our original plan, so we'd have to get that. Now, the work that, um, DPW was doing on overtime basis, that, I think that we don't need any sort of special permit for that, that's really just cleaning debris, uh, and then one of the projects they really like to focus on this year are the junk trees which are growing out of the wall, so, um.
Dan, you and Gino discussed with the county mayor, is saying?
Um, the, um, the permit or, or funding?
No.
Okay.
The cleaning. You discussed it with the county?
Yeah.
The cleaning?
Yeah. Well, well, well.
Oh, you were, you just talked about it.
Yeah. Yeah, so, uh, yeah, we, uh.
So, hold on, um, Sharon, is this what your, is your idea of like the river maintenance, is that the, the, the big project? Or like, is that where you're requesting the money go to, like, if we were to differ into the fund balance, is that what you, you're suggesting that we use the money for that?
Actually, isn't there a chat function?
Operating budget for the river cleanup.
Yeah, so that's just.
Isn't it in the budget already?
Well, we, we have, we have contracts, we have, we have two different budget lines, there's a line for, you know, maintenance of the stormwater conveyance system. And then, uh, last year, when, uh, uh, the board authorized the transfer from surplus, that was in, that was, was a separate, I think it's like, uh, eighty five.
Eighty one fifty.
Eighty one fifteen, eighty one.
And that's in the budget now?
Eighty one forty is the storm water, eighty one fifty, we called it water maintenance.
Yeah.
Okay, that's in the budget now.
And eighty one forty is in the budget, okay, alright, yeah, which is the, uh. And eighty-one forty is in the budget, okay, alright, yeah, which is the uh, the main, like the, the stormwater conveyance maintenance.
Well, let me ask you this, can we, can we um, put, let's say, two million aside? For um, for uh flood mitigation and keep it in the reserve fund until we need it?
Yeah, the the board can set up a reserve fund.
Yeah.
Um, and your appropriate money, right, it's the same theory. As, you know, we had the parking reserve fund, we have the uh recreation reserve.
Yeah.
Um, I think that's, that's a policy question, if I do that.
Where are we in the reserve, where are we in the reserve? About fourteen million.
On fund balance, on allocate, yeah. It's about thirteen, fourteen, and the mayor's asking if what's in the budget is enough. What's budgeted is enough?
Well, um, for river maintenance, we didn't put anything specific.
Ninety-three, ninety-three thousand and eighty-one forty.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's enough for that line, you know, we could, I, we we really have that line there to help us. Supplement if we need additional, you know, catch basin cleaning, we need to bring someone in to help us. Uh, with a uh, uh, certain projects.
Um, so, do we have any more, do we have money in um, in that? An eighty-one forty right now to clean up after our last flood, because. I I see next to ninety-five, that's a mess.
So um typically what we do for these events, and I thought you talked about last about being Ophelia?
No, that last flood, meaning like, it the flood that.
In March.
March.
Oh, okay, um, but, so, let me, let me answer it two ways, let me answer it two ways. So if there's some sort of major event, I can either, or it'll feel yet. What we usually do is we come to the board and we say. We're, we have a strong suspicion we'll get reimbursed for this through a FEMA disaster declaration. But in the short term, we need X dollars to fund the immediate repairs, which will be reimbursed over time. Um, if there was some unforeseen. Disaster. That, you know, wasn't going to rise to the level of a FEMA event. We would probably still come to the board, ask for a transfer from surplus, cause you know, we don't budget for disasters. It's it's, you know, I I I'm good, but not, I can't predict when we're gonna get hit by a meteor.
What are we deciding to make?
And right now, I mean, we saw the our, this year's budget. Is four, about forty-eight five, forty-eight million. Um, and so thirty percent of that is fourteen point five million, but do we have to count the library tan as part of? Our budget.
It's, it's an in and out, it's it's in this budget.
No, but but what it is, is it, it already, the library tan is artificially, artificially, it's increasing our. It was also, it's increasing our budget by a million dollars.
I I what I'm saying is, is 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 the thirty percent of of of, you know, thirty percent of fund balance. Fund balance is supposed to match thirty percent of the budget that we adopt. But do our, is it cheating to discount the library tan from our, from the budget that we adopt? And so that the thirty percent is thirty percent of forty-eight five less the ten.
Yeah, I mean.
It's still gonna be, we still need around fourteen million dollars.
But you, well, part of the two-year plan to build back up the fund balance is retire that, retire that expense.
Yeah, okay, but but, I mean, but.
So you you would, um, I think irrespective of how you calculate it. The fact that it would be retired within a set time would get you back to that thirty percent number regardless.
If if, okay, but we're still, um, we're still, I mean, we're looking, looking at. The the schedule of of what we're paying back. Um, we don't really drop our um bond debt until twenty thirty. So it's, it's, it's two point five million next year, and it's two point four million. In twenty thirty, thirty-one, and then in twenty thirty-one, thirty-two, it goes down to one point two more. So we're not retiring a lot, and we're talking about increasing, so we're gonna have more, you know, for, for, like, every. For every million dollars we bond is another hundred thousand dollars roughly in our budget. So that, I guess, I guess the question is, how much, you know? We know we're gonna do some more capital projects, so we're gonna be bonding. Um, we can take some of that out of reserve fund, but we're kinda getting close to the reserve fund. How much are we gonna get back from FEMA? Because that may help us with the reserve fund, I mean, I know we've got money, we're waiting for some money.
Yeah, we're, we're a couple, I think a couple million dollars.
Couple million, like what, two, three?
From Ida N, I mean, we haven't, I don't, you know.
No, no.
No?
The the big one is still out there, which was the.
And what is that?
In contact.
That's like one point three million or something like that.
Yeah, for the.
Yeah, I mean, I, I want, I call, I call Courtney, put her on the spot, but.
Yeah, no, Courtney, Courtney's been putting me in the email.
Okay.
Um, I'm sorry, I forgot his name, and he's been in contact with FEMA, and they've been going back and forth, so he's trying to push it along.
Okay.
So, if that's one point something from Ida. And then we're expecting a couple million from Ophelia, let's just say two million.
No, I don't, it's not gonna be that much.
Okay, so then let's be one point, another one point five.
It might not be that much.
We've been reimbursed for Ophelia.
So how much?
No, no, Ophelia's one last September.
Yeah, but haven't we gotten some payments on that?
I don't think so.
So maybe it would.
It's it's too soon.
Can we say that like together will, it's together be two million dollars?
Um, I I think you can say that, you know, there is projected uh reimbursements coming from FEMA. Uh, well, I I'd take the, the, it's. There'd be a net increase, there'd be an increase in revenue from FEMA reimbursement. And a decrease in expense with the retirement of the library tan. So those two numbers together, you're probably talking conservatively two and a half million dollars.
Can we, can we allocate those money for to flood, for flood mitigation?
That, that's a, that's a board.
Yeah, I guess I'll ask the board.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Can we say when that money comes in? Say that that's money goes specifically back to flooding, considering that we got it because of flooding, it should go back to flood min, for flood mitigation.
Well, we've spent it, I mean, part of the problem is a lot of it's called a reimbursement, we've spent.
Already spent it.
We've already spent it, so.
Back that we spend, don't we, on this?
No, we.
Well, not, well, we, we, we probably do because the, you know, there, the things you get reimbursed for. The vehicle usage we get reimbursed for, uh, but, you know, I, so, um. I will say that the first time I ever put in a request. Or reimbursement with FEMA was, I think, late two thousand one, early two thousand two. Uh, in the aftermath of nine eleven, uh, every fire department was asked to. Uh, provide excess equipment to Westchester County. Uh, so it could be used for uh rescue and recovery efforts. And, you know, we had given them some, uh, they're both Stokes baskets. And it's like twelve thousand bucks, and that was, that was really all our only cost. And when we got the reimbursement back, we just, you know, we decided to use it on a thermal imaging camera. That the fire department wanted, so we we use it for a non-reimbursement purpose, but. Cause ultimately, you know, we're, we're just, it's, it's also, you know, being collected, it's gonna be, it's going to be received. In a different fiscal year than it was spent.
And and basically, what we did to fund those accounts was take money out of our reserve fund to set up separate accounts, so they could be all tracked separately. You know, and so now it's gonna go back.
So it goes back to, so it's a part of that nine sixty number.
I think, you know, that a lot of communities, you know, will put, have a reserve, have a, you know, a dedicated reserve. Or dedicate, for their reserves, building a new village hall, or doing some big capital project. I think that we don't typically do that, so we have, that's, and we should maybe think about doing that for flooding. So it doesn't necessarily have to be in this budget, but we just, we know that we have this money that we're going to use for flood.
It it is a.
Mitigation.
Yeah, I know, it's a, it's a larger and much more interesting policy question.
So, so what happened to, because I understand you're saying it's, it's a um, to reimbursement. And it's money already spent, the money's already been spent, and it, the hopes was for it to go back to the reserve. Let it just not go back to the reserve and just pay for a project. Like, we don't have to put it right back to the reserve.
I guess the question is, if we don't need it for the reserve. And so that's why, I mean, that's where.
I think it ultimately has to come to, come to, and then we just, if the board decides we want a project, and. Do you start a reserve, then we do a project?
Draw down our reserve fund so much that when we have a project that we can do. These are applying for a bunch of projects that are grant related now.
Okay.
And so, you're saying, okay, so what is the number, you're saying we cannot go below thirty, right?
Percent.
Thirty percent, yes, I, I didn't say percent, but I knew what they're, the thirty, we can't go below the thirty. And I don't wanna go below, I don't, well, we can't go below the thirty, what number do we have to be at? To be at the thirty?
I I think it's around fourteen. Fourteen point five million dollars.
Alright, so, so, so.
Which is kind of where we are now, which is roughly where we are.
So we can't even touch the reserve?
Well, well, okay.
Yeah, but even if, but if we can't, I'm sorry, but if we can't, if, if we're even, there, some projections are coming in saying that we may or may not. It'll possibly be a hard, a way of going to replenish, like. Okay, I I don't know, maybe it's just me.
I was, I was just, I, I, like I said, this is a very interesting, you know, concept.
Yeah, it's my goodness.
But, but, you know, I think you have purpose, not is to finalize this budget. Uh, I, if you wanna have a separate discussion of that, that's a, maybe a a better work session topic.
So the que- question is, how much, how much money to, uh, how much money are we short, where are we gonna get from?
Or what can we eliminate?
What do you wanna eliminate?
I, I'm.
That's it.
Open it on the screen too.
No, it's okay, but, you know.
And 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 does anybody wanna talk about alternative revenues?
At this stage, I mean, we got, you know, we can't implement additional revenues between now and when we have to adopt the budget. And we don't have any plan, real plan for additional revenues.
Well, you wanna, wanna make something, if you have an idea, I mean, it's, you know, what do you wanna do?
Well, I I think that, I think just pick an additional revenues out of the hat and saying this is how we're gonna balance the budget.
Uh, yeah, I mean, you need money, how, where do you get it from? That, that, it 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 seems pretty simple.
You just basically, you know, you let a tax or a fee on someone, it still increases people's taxes. It's a little more, it's less straightforward than piercing the cap.
Yeah, I mean, as far as the revenue. You know, maybe there's like a little play, like five, ten thousand here or there, but it's not gonna, you know, uh. Uh, I I I can't see it, you know, um, filling that entire gap.
Why?
Why, I mean.
No, 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 what, what, what are you referring to? What, what's not gonna fill that kinda gap?
No, what, you, I don't think there's enough wiggle room with these revenues. Where we're gonna. Yeah, cause like right now, I think, I think the exercise that you asked about yesterday is like, you know, backing out. The, you know, as far as our fees and permits, you know, that accounts for about. What is that, uh, twenty-five to thirty percent of the non-property tax revenue? Uh, the big non-property tax revenues are, are gonna be the sales tax. Which, you know, I think we're pretty solid on. Um, the mortgage tax, which, um, you know, I think, I I don't see much movement in that. Uh, our interest earnings, maybe there's a little move, but, you know, I'm thinking maybe. Like twenty-five thousand dollars, not, you know, four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the uh, building permits, again, I don't, I don't see a tremendous increase there. Uh, yeah, just trying to think out loud, I mean, you know, we have. Uh, you know, the, we, we already, uh, you know, looked at the parking uh revenue. Which, you know, based on our current collection, I think we're good for the increase we forecast. Uh, we forecasted in our thousand dollars. Um, maybe there's a little wee way there, but not much, I mean, the only, I I could argue that. Uh, you know, when we had looked at the revenue, parking revenue last. It was about six hundred thousand dollars through, yeah, through nine, nine months. Which, or sorry, six thousand, seven thousand.
We did, we did, we spoke about sixty-six thousand in here.
Yes.
This month, so.
Yeah, I mean, I I I will, I would agree that, um, the, the, what we have. What we're gonna gain for the remainder of this year, the the slowest part of our year for meter revenue is gonna be August and December. And that's already accounted for. Vacations. Yeah, the last two weeks of August, you could throw a ball down America.
So I I raised the issue of sanitation fees, I mean, I I know it's a, it's it's out the box and it's, uh, uh. It's a, it, but, it would be a uh, a tremendous uh, uh, income source. And um. There's a, and it would enable you to pay back money you take, took out of the reserve next year.
Well, I, first of all, I, I, there's been no community discussion about it.
No.
Second, even if you adopted a fee today, we wouldn't be in a position. To have a program up and running by June one, which is when we send out the tax bills, and we collect the fee.
And number two, I think a lot of people may feel that they pay a refuse fee, and that is their property.
Yeah, well.
And there's a, there is a Westchester County refuse tax.
Yeah, and and and, but, but, but most people I talk to, uh, who are not old timers here. Are shocked to hear that, uh, that, that there's backyard trash pickup, which is just, you know, just doesn't exist. You know, I mean, it's, it's, that, that's a, that's a fairly extravagant service.
For me, a government, no, from a government administrator point of view, I agree. But, but.
That just never changed back after COVID, and because we just continued to do.
It did change back.
It changed back.
During COVID, we were, we required people to bring their.
The savings with that would be, that would, you, that would be born over several years.
All I'm saying is, the, the, don't take it away, leave it, but charge for it.
But you can't, I mean, how, who's gonna monitor, have somebody on every truck monitoring, you know, like, at this house, I had to go to the back of this house, I didn't have to.
Um, so, in, in a lot of private uh, carting uh scenarios, they do have that. So for instance, I recall that, um, uh, when I was, uh, in in college. Uh, the town that my parents lived in had private carting, and you could pay extra for rear door collection.
Right, but you have, you have the homeowner have an individual contract with the vendor, how is, like? What, how is, so people are gonna have to sign up for backyard garbage?
It it would be.
Then everybody.
Um, it would, it would be difficult to administer, um, I could also see, um, games being played with that.
And and and, but, but we charge now for, for organic waste pickup, right?
But, but we people have the, they have to get the cans, they have to get the material from us, and they have to bring it to the curb. So we know, and it's about two hundred and twenty. And it's two hundred and twenty people, so we know where we're going.
I mean, you, I mean, but, well, I'm just saying, if you want down the road, if you want a revenue source, so that, if you flip the script. Make that free and charge for people don't do it, that would be, that would be a way to go, and we encourage it. But, you know. It's not like, it's not, I, you know, it's not like we're, 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 we're poverty stricken. Alright, so. We're gonna adapt, I mean, what do we do?
Are we comfortable with adopting the budget on one next week?
Which budget?
Well, the changes that we described, that we, we, we've that.
And piercing the tax cap?
It would, it would not be the first time that a board has done that.
Yeah. Um, uh, so, I mean, I.
I I I personally don't think it's worth piercing the tax cap unless we're doing a really, a good reset. This is, this is just.
And what would that reset look like for you?
I think really thinking about how. I think really thinking about how, where the budget should be and, and doing a deeper analysis, we're just. Because we over, because this budget overestimated, um. Revenues and underestimated some expenses. After we went through it and made some changes, we're slight, we're one point six percent over what we're allowed to adopt in the tax gap. So I think if we're, I mean.
One point three, one point two three.
One point two three, okay, so one point two three, oh, actually, one point one six, right?
Some of these revenues saying we're just not comfortable with them, even though. Even though the, the staff had said that they, they could hit those.
Except we, we weren't, we're nowhere near that on the boats, I mean, and, um, this is what happened last year. This is the exact same thing.
Returning money this year.
We didn't hit those revenues last year.
Yes, but we, we, but we're, we're.
Well, we don't know how much we're gonna return, it could be a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Bottom line is, uh, we didn't, we, it, it, it worked out fine.
So, um, one, one item we still need to. Are you gonna call James? Is that what you said you're gonna do? About the street opening permits. Because that, that was, we cut that by seventy thousand. Um, I think that we usually cut most of that at the. Kalan at this year, but I want her to confirm with them whether that's a realistic, if we, if we, if, uh. I believe we are the number if we need to reduce the revenue that much, but still, that's not the, uh.
It doesn't get us.
Doesn't get us all the way.
So, even with all of this, this is just a little bunch. We can't even conceptualize. Adding to the planning department, which needs to be added to, I think, if, if there was any department of adding staff to, I would need. I would think the planning department is, um. Not even a low sub, and I'm just spinning this out, not even a low sub program, not even like. Where this is just as is.
Yeah, I mean, that's where we are.
No, I, I just wanted to make sure I'm, I'm think, I'm hearing what I'm hearing in my head.
Another part timer added. I had another part timer.
And what about, and what about, and buildings, building getting their extra people?
And that building.
Now, I, I will need to talk to the board at some point because we are, we have a couple of employees out, a couple inspectors. Out on workers' comp, which that's really affecting our ability to conduct inspections. So we may need some, uh, funding assistance so we can bring on some people on a temporary basis. Just to keep up with the inspections, cause that's, uh, that's, that's a problem, but then.
Well, it's, it's, it seems like there, there, there's some traumatic activity needs to happen here. So, um, I don't think we can just say, uh, you know, uh, uh, there's some, 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 uh. Red lines that need to be crossed, so not red lines, but, uh.
She's asking about the flood coordinator, the mayor, no budget for flood coordinator?
I didn't include that in the budget, I mean, we can. Big, I guess, something like that would be between salaries and benefits, hundred and, you know, sixty, hundred and seventy thousand.
What is the most realistic way? Because at the end of the day, we have to function, we'll just to function. And if the ways that, you know, we are collecting revenue, one is, what is our top two, uh, revenue departments? Is it courts, planning, uh, planning department and rec?
So, uh, the, the building is number one.
Building, I meant, I know what I meant.
Um, enforcement is, is number two, but I, I'm not gonna recommend that you. Well, but, but first, well, first of all, you know, um, we don't come close to it, but you're, you're technically capped. On the amount of money you can derive from violations. Cause like, you know what, you know. But, uh, it's, it's probably building and then, um, then probably rec. And Harvard makes money, but.
Takes money to make money.
But, you know, I said, in, in terms of what, what's, you know, the simplest. Way to get to adopt the budget, you know, I would suggest it's, you know, going along with the cap. That's, but that's, no, that's a policy matter.
I mean, I, I, I. I mean, uh, it, it, it.
If we go over the cap, I just need us to pick a, a, a big flood mitigation item. That will be reason enough for me to agree to it. So, um. Like, and I know that's not a you or Sally or Laura thing, that's a board thing, and I'm just talking to my fellow board members of how I feel. That's it. I don't wanna, and I wanna pick something, I don't care if it's done next year, I need to pick something. That would be reason enough for me.
Well, the, the, well, there, there, there's, there's some, some ideas that will come up, but I don't think, uh, I don't think this board is gonna be able to, uh, um, uh. I picked one, I, I, I think, uh, the ones that are on the table have been, uh, have been, uh.
I think the ones on the, at the end of the day, there's no perfect solution, I don't, like, we don't have a perfect solution. You either try it, if it works, great, if it doesn't, like, we have to try something, so that's what I'm saying, like. There's no perfect solution, not even the ACE is a perfect solution.
Well, I, I think, I, I'm gonna say this right now, I think you need to draw down that, uh, the reserve fund and, uh. And come up with some sort of whole, whole turn of things.
So I would say that there is no flood mitigation project on the table yet, we're trying, we're working with the DEC. And a couple of other agencies to try and get projects going, we don't have a specific project to pick. Well, I, I agree with you that, 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 you know, that, and, and we're still waiting for the Army Corps, so whatever we do needs to make sure it. Coordinates with the Army Corps project and that the Army Corps is okay with it, but the Army Corps. Does, has been encouraging, so he's.
He, he said, um, it's usually around now, April, he'll go out and he'll, and he'll measure and he'll. Bill, and that's when the majority of the revenues come in, he doesn't, um, quite remember why it was increased. Because it was increased to one seventy, he thinks maybe Jerry, and if you wanna call, he said, he said maybe Jerry included the. Con Ed fines for double poles in there. Um, but he's not a hundred percent sure if that was included. But he said he raised the fees fifty dollars on all the fees and all the square footage, so, um. He said with that raised fee, he won't really know what he's gonna collect until he goes out and he measures, so it's just within the next month, he said.
Okay, so we'll, we'll keep it, uh, wait till it happens.
And technically those, um, double poles fees are only gonna round out, I think, what's like three hundred thousand?
Also, you know, we're, you know, we are seeing, uh, significant movement on Con Ed's part.
They're cleaning it up.
They're big time.
Which is really what we want. Do it for. So mayor agrees with you, Lilani, and the river cleanup needs to be done.
Well, yeah, that's why, that's why I was asking before, like, was the idea of the river cleaning up, clean up just a maintenance? Fund, or was it a part of like the big project, because I make, do maintenance fine, but aside that money. But a bigger project, could that, yeah.
Well, I'm gonna suggest you, you, you put the money aside for the appropriate big project when it comes up. So this board or subsequent board can act on, on demand without, without opening up the budget.
Prepare for next project.
So, I, I think.
I mean, I think we should be budgeting for flood mitigation and having done it, so.
So you wanna talk about that right now, or that's another, like, not work session?
Running out of time and.
I get it.
You're gonna be out of town, so you're not, are you gonna be zooming in for the budget?
What, another, we have another budget meeting?
No, I'm saying, are you, I mean, for the.
No, 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 but I will say what I need to say, um, that's why I'm saying everything now, I'm a, I'm telling, saying everything I need to say right now. Um, cause whatever happens is gonna happen. So, if we can come up with a plan. Let's come up with a plan, and yes, I agree with the mayor, um, that. River, uh, river maintenance, great, big project, hit one, Sharon, I know you're tens away, but, um. What are the, what are like the two to three big projects that, um, you have been talking to the DC Army Corps and the. And whoever county with?
Well, that's it, that, that, what she's been talking about is, is just, there's no beginning.
Thank you, thank you, I know I heard some, that is a big thing.
Ward Avenue flood plain restoration.
It's a project, and if anything on that pro- and, and we even.
Flood plain restoration.
That's all, that, that, that's like a, uh.
But that's, that's, is that a part of the ACE?
Yeah, that's part of it.
No.
Says no.
And is, in, was in the budget, anything with the study for, um, for the flats? They're, they're the study of the water.
Yeah.
That, that's ARPA money, the board already adopted a resolution on that. We will have a recommendation for you for next Wednesday. And a resolution to, with our recommendation of rule order contract.
But that money comes from. ARPA, but it's, it's the reserve, it's in the reserve.
Uh, no, it's not. It's, yeah. But I said, if you. I, yeah, I don't wanna, you know, leave with the point or get into a tangent, but if you wanna do something as part of the. Budget resolution that says, um, you know, uh, you will, you know. Uh, you will dedicate, you know, fifty percent of any, uh, uh. Uh, surplus from fiscal year twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four up to X dollars. To be, uh, put into a reserve for, uh, future flood mitigation projects.
That's good, that's, that, that's.
But that doesn't get us, that doesn't get us anywhere for Wednesday, she said, downtown sewers are the project for this year.
Thank you.
The Ward Avenue in Columbus, that's next.
I haven't, I gotta ask something, okay. And you started with the survey on it, is it possible, I mean, that when they, when they survey it, they're gonna figure out that. That, uh, storm sewers that are underwater really aren't gonna help much in a flood?
It, it's possible they could say that there's no feasible solution. Or they're, or they could say, this is the only feasible.
I never, I, cause I never, I never thought that was a, that, that was a, a, a great flood, flood mitigation, cause if it, what, what's it gonna flood, it's gonna be underwater? Uh, what's it gonna drain?
I don't have an answer.
Yeah, I mean, so, so.
But, you know, this is, again, this is a project that the board asked us to move forward.
But also the community, I think the.
And you feel, feel better, which, which, which is good. Minor street fight, but in a big flood, it's gonna go underwater.
But, and, and listen, it's possible, you know, and I, you know, I'm not, I'm not gonna speak for members of the community. I have interpreted that they understand in the mi- case of a major event. You know, nothing's gonna help with, with storm sewers. I think what they have been asking about is for those minor events. Is there something that can be done with a drainage system that could ameliorate flood conditions? For that type, it's street flood.
Okay, so what I'm hearing. The flats are getting us, the, 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 um, sewer systems, or. Ward Avenue is getting their area fixed. Columbus, is that a definite, or is that a, is that like a, are we're getting there?
So, can, let me, what, you know.
Give me a percentage of how, how far are we into it?
So, mayor, if you want, if you want me to try and roll over what we've discussed instead of you hurting your thumbs. Um, so, the, the three projects that we've talked about are the, uh, Ward Avenue. Uh, you know, wetland or, you know, flood burnt project, uh, reestablishing. Reestablishing flood plain, too many else, at Columbus Park. Uh, and, you know, possibly, you know, Station Plaza Bridge or, uh, something like that. Um, the funding sources that we identified and were recommended by the state DEC. Were the, uh, Green Infrastructure Grant Program, which is a program oriented to the EFC. The Environmental Settlements Corporation, that would pay for ninety percent of a project. The, you could match that EFC grant, which is actually federal money. With a Water Quality Improvement Program grant from the DEC. Which would cover seventy-five percent of the remaining ten percent, so that would conceivably. Those two funding sources could cover ninety-seven and a half percent of a project, leaving a balance at two and a half percent. Options for that remaining two and a half percent, the county has their flood mitigation fund, uh, which we were successful in getting for.
But we haven't tapped into yet.
No, we have, we, we got money for.
I'm talking about recent. That was fairly recent, but I'm not talking about recent. They're, this budget, they're just, go ahead.
Yeah, so, I mean, that, that's, that's, that, that's the, the short version. Uh, you have, you have anything to add there, just a thumbs up or thumbs down or?
She's typing. So while she's typing, um. Where are we, how far, because that, the, we have, we don't have the grant, we don't have that ninety percent. What is the possibility, are we like seventy-five percent there, we like fifty percent there, where we, where are we?
Well, 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 we have to apply for the grants first.
And when, when is the deadline?
They have, well.
They open May first.
Yeah, they usually open sometime in May, uh, and, and the grants are usually due by the end of July.
Okay.
So.
Alright, so, uh, okay, okay.
Okay, so then, hold on, I wanna plan. If we have the three projects that Dan just said and what Sharon's been saying. Then can the next, like, like, I don't even wanna say twenty, we're in twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty, let's say twenty-six. Let's say we just, we, we give two years each for each, all for maybe three projects. And then, starting in twenty-six, we lay out with the possibility of changes, we lay out stuff for. Um, Beaver Sw- Beaver, Beaver Swamp, Beaver Swamp, we, and, um. Uh, or, and, um, Warren and all that, the, 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 the heights, like. Start doing those pocket areas, so if we start down, start with those three projects and then keep shifting. While the ACE gets their life together, does that sound like a feasible plan? Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, but.
Because you're like, literally, you're giving time, I'm sorry, but you're giving time and you're giving enough time. For projects to be, for money to come in and for projects to be done, implemented, whether you need a study. Or we've already passed the study and we're actually, you know, shoveling the ground. So that this is something that we can give to the community, so I think that's what they're asking for.
The thing you, the thing we, I, I, I wanna make sure we do though is that we, that we allow for. Subsequent board to be fiscally nimble enough to be able to react to a great idea when it comes up, even if it's gonna cost a lot of money. Alright, that's, that's, that's what, that's what I'm.
That can happen with a deep reserve.
There you go.
Our fund balance is high. It doesn't, that doesn't get us to adopting a budget on Wednesday, what we're trying to do is get to a point where we adopt a budget on Wednesday. Can you create a tentative timeline for the design work? Because on the three projects.
Um, yeah, I, I could talk to, um, uh, we have a conversation with Gino and Mark Caravan of SLR. Yeah.
Does, does, what, what I said. But does it make, does it make sense enough for us to, to adopt in a budget?
But I think those projects, from the way Dan described them, are not gonna really cost us much money because we're expecting.
To be two, two and a half percent.
Two and a half percent of the projects, you know, rec now, and we don't have estimates for those projects either, I mean, the SLR. Sort of had an estimate for flood management, right?
Yeah, it, it's like, he says, it's a, you know, low cost, medium cost, high cost, which is. Our engineers think.
But so then we can, if, if we wanted to, like he was saying before, fifty percent of any extra revenue that we. We get from now until the end of the year goes towards a fund base, towards specifically for flood mitigation, will increase.
Well, I, I know, as I said, I regretted. Was a surplus.
Right, so, I, I mean, and that's.
But that, that's, that's possible.
Right, that's, but that, but that, that's not, we're not gonna know what the surplus is until after June first, well, after. So that's not, that doesn't, that's not.
Doesn't get us to, are we breaking the cap or?
Right, if we thought the surplus, let's say, i- if, 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 it's, if, I don't know, numbers have changed a little bit tonight, but let's say we had. Right, um, if we thought the surplus, let's say, i- if 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 to it's if, I don't know, numbers have changed a little bit tonight, but let's say we had to take. Three hundred thousand dollars out of the reserve fund to do what we think we're doing based on lowering revenue expectations and.
Raising an additional three over the nine nine nine.
Right, which is a lot, that's really a lot.
I I think it should be more than that, but.
Are we, are, do we think that, you know, what's the projections, like maybe two hundred thousand dollars surplus going back in? You know, and and, I mean. That's a lot to take out of the reserve.
I think I think we're gonna be drawing it down.
Don't know how we're gonna replenish it, and that doesn't leave us, what if we draw it down even further, we're tight now with the with the numbers. We don't have a big chunk of money in case we need to do a flood mitigation project, I mean, we we've spent a lot of money this year on stuff that. You know, we spent five million dollars out of the reserve fund this year, and that's.
Um, most like, most of it needed to be done.
Uh, you know.
And what you have done.
Yeah, I I voted no on several.
No, I know you did, but like in terms of.
Yeah, cuz I think we don't, because I think we were spending money without understanding the long-term picture. You know, we went out to dinner and maybe we didn't have money for the mortgage, so I I'm just saying, this is, this is where we are now.
And I also, I also, I'm sorry, I have a question to that, because if some of the some of the things, the items, and I'm not saying all, but some of the items. If you kept kicking them down, then kick kicking the gum, kicking the can down the road, um. When were they gonna get fixed or when when they gonna get replaced? But and that, but.
But Leilani, the I think the biggest priority you have is fixing flooding.
But then, but then again, like, I'm sorry, but like, I'm just been, I've been on here for a year and some change and like.
We're at the end of the road with a whole pile of cans on our feet, that's what.
That's why I was like, I I get what you're saying in terms of like, you know, we we went to dinner and then we didn't, we didn't know how we were gonna pay the mortgage. But we have, like, when was it gonna get done? Or when were you gonna pay? That's why even now, I'm saying like, if we're gonna go over the tax cap. We better have something to say to them on Wednesday saying, we're gonna go to track that, but this is the plan, this is the plan.
I I mean, I'm not comfortable going over the tax cap on such a tenuous plan. I I I just do not.
What we like to do?
I think we have, I think, we really have to think about, we were unrealistic in some of our expenditures, we. Move them down, I think we have to think about things that we don't do, things that we're gonna cut, we've spent, you know. What have we spent a lot, what are we spending a lot more money on this year? I mean, the only, I mean, I'm not saying I have the answer to what we can cut, but I I feel like. That's my two cents, if everybody else. If everybody else wants to go.
What do you wanna cut?
I said, I don't know what I wanna cut, but what I'm, but I'm, but I I am concerned. That we are, we don't think about cutting, we just think about taking out of the reserve.
What do you want to, what, what? I I I I just came up with. Charge a sanitation fee, uh, and 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 raise that money, but we can't do that, could people?
And Dan said it can't be implemented by June first, I mean, that's, you know, it it, that's, that's, that may not be, that. That's not something that can be.
It would certainly be a big revenue source next year, to put money back in the in the reserve, I mean, you you.
It's a, it's a revenue source that simply taxes the same people who would be affected if we pierced the cap.
Yes.
So it's just another tax.
But but it but it's but it's a flat tax, every everybody who uses the service pays it and 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 it is what it is, I mean.
I'm sorry, Nora, um, what, did Jason say that, um, there was some things in the, um, and. Uh, some activities in his department that can be cut? Did he suggest anything?
The only thing he, you're, he just was the bark park attendant.
Yeah.
I'm talking about.
Mostly activities are are revenue generating.
The tiki thing is regular.
Yeah, but I don't think that's in Jason's, but isn't that in like our.
I thought that was his department.
All right, so so.
Some of this, maybe cut some of it out. Is that the not, no, we can't. Easter egg salary.
Yeah, we spent a lot less on National Night Out last year cuz we had budgeted for fireworks and ended up.
And I, we didn't do that.
No, I'm saying, it's not, it's not, it's not an excessive, it's not, it was going to be more expensive last year than it was.
We could go through the uh, the, I mean, uh, Chuck reacted to my idea about ten percent across the board. But but we could go through individually and see which ones we.
Well, Dan just said, worth, no matter what fees we increase, we're not gonna get to.
Yeah, I mean, the the the, remember, the the fees that uh we have. You'll generate about five million, five and a half million dollars. Uh, you know, a lot of the stuff is, you know, non non property tax related, it's not, we, nothing we, nothing this board adopts. Would change the revenue that's coming in, we can't do anything to increase sales tax, we can't do anything to increase the mortgage tax. Can't do anything to increase interest earnings, uh, the only piece that we have that that generate revenue. Are, you know, the building permit fees, the parking fees, um, I I say, I wouldn't. Uh, I think our 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 meter rates are competitive right now.
Okay.
Um, I think our permit rates, we did uh recommend an increase in that. Um, I, but again, I I don't, I can't foresee, you know. You we temporarily, and you know, you look at some of the fees, the building permit fees, I think we did a, a major, you know. Study last year to make sure that our permit fees were in line.
And that's why I raised them.
Yeah, so I, um, and again, I I I think you just be, not that. Um, not that you typically have repetitive building permit, uh, customers. But, you know, I think that 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 B is is fairly competitive.
It's competitive, but maybe maybe we go go all, you know, slip over to the high side. I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, if if if, if it's as dire as I'm hearing here, then you gotta do something drastic. Well, you can't just say, we gotta do something and then not not and and.
Yeah, I I I wouldn't use the word dire. It's not like we're, you know, we we would recommend that, like in the city of Rye where they had back-to-back years of seventy percent tax rate increases.
But the mayor's asking about tiki because she said she doesn't think L M C ha- L M C may not have the money to do tiki.
Yeah.
This year.
Well. Tiki wasn't the blast last year because it got rained out, but it is one of the fan phase, but not as much as.
I mean, how much, what's the uh expense?
Or tiki? Yeah, only fourteen.
I I, you know, I.
The I say the biggest. The biggest, um, uh, budget. Or. What I still was like a thirty-eight.
That's the, that's the largest one, that's about.
No, it was a block party. It was a block party. Thirty-eight one.
Yeah, I I think that's the foundation that we've already started, planning of committing for that this year already. Yeah, those are the types of events that you know. Yeah, you have to start. Uh, planning for those several months.
Where in this are the are the two big fire department, uh, um, items, the uh, the the uh, the shed and the uh, and Losa.
With the low sap.
But that's a referendum.
If if that got approved, you'd have to budget that.
Okay, fine, fine, but I just wanted to, I just wanted to see where we were.
So, one of it, so the um tree lighting, which was less than ideal. That's fifty-five thousand. And if we're not gonna spruce it up this year, I say gets it. Because.
What did that, what was the actual expense for it?
That whole thing is fifty-five.
I think we get, we budgeted, but I don't think it's supposed to that.
I don't know if we wanna cancel Christmas.
I said cancel Christmas, I didn't say cancel Hanukkah, I didn't say cancel, um, what's the other ones?
I mean, you 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 still have a tree that's lit, you just wouldn't have it lit at a ceremony, right?
So.
Or maybe not have the whole thing, like, do we make money off of that one?
No, but, I mean, it's, I I think it's a. Yeah, I mean, so, you know.
I'm not saying not, maybe to bring it back, you know, like, take it, we have, maybe I have to take it away for a year.
The number right now is three hundred thirty-five thousand.
I think it's.
Getting to tax cap compliant, either uh make sure revenues and cuts or, you know.
Or cuts or. Is we're not gonna be able to.
I think we we, I think, so, is I it's gonna be, you know, we'll cut something, oh, you said, cut something, or I'll go over to tax gap. But there's, it's not, I don't believe it's gonna get better, it's just gonna get progressively worse as, you know, our community grows and the things that. People want or need, um, and then fixing things, so they be, I think, even though if we adopt a budget. Um. We this conversation should be, should be continued. And. Because after November, I know I'm not gonna be here, give thanks. And the conversation needs to be, still needs to be had.
And if and if there's something, there's something unpopular and and um and structurally, uh, um. Structurally, uh, uh. Appropriate, it has to be done, this is the year to do it. Because nobody on the board is.
So we're scheduled to adopt it on April twenty-fourth, and we have to adopt it by April thirtieth. I'm not suggesting we have another meeting, but do we think we're ready to come up with something, I mean, Leilani, you're not gonna be here next week, right, you're away all week.
No, ma'am, give thanks.
You see the water.
I mean, uh, you know, I, uh.
Well, yeah, so from a, if you're, if you're not, Leilani is not gonna be here next week. You you you, you still need three votes to adopt a budget.
Sure, sure, I I I I would, I would suggest we, um, and also, things could work out. They could, I mean, with with the these, we were being very conservative of some of the revenues. And maybe we're being too conservative, maybe they 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 will run out, so work out, so maybe we would we dip into the reserves. Uh, I take it, don't break the kind of the tax cap, and then, uh, and and, uh. See how it, see how it works and see how it, uh. It shakes out. You don't wanna break the tax cap, I don't wanna break the tax cap. I think.
I don't think there's any point in breaking the tax cap unless you're, unless the community's gonna do a real reset. I don't think we've thought about it thoroughly enough to even.
So, you know, I I like the fact that even though taxes have gone up, that our tax rate has gone down two years ago. So so, uh, I I would like to, I would like to, I've always said from day one, I'd like to shift some of this stuff to fees. Away from the, away from the property taxes, yes, it's a, yes, it's a lateral movement, but, um, but, uh, and yes, it's a tax increase. But once it's done, it's done, and I think, I think that, doing it. Crossing that Rubicon now, and and people will will both, will get used to it, and it's a, as a, as a, it's a ton of money if you do it. So, you know, I I'm just fond of putting it out there, I mean, you know, with with that that backyard trash pickup is a, is a, is a, is a very, very. Um. High-end, uh, um, service, we should charge for it. And and people have the option of doing it or not doing it, uh, that it's not like, uh, and, uh, everybody could do it if they wanted, but I'm sure a lot of people don't. People, I brought up at 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 the, at the, the Environment Committee last night. Just about everybody except maybe one or two old timers were shocked that it even existed, and they lived, they've lived here for years, so. So, uh, uh, I I think it's, you know, it's an anachronism, and if we're gonna hang on to it, we should charge for it. That's that's that, that's my, my opinion.
Manny?
I think we're shooting the wrong number.
And what does that mean?
Like, I I I I just, I don't wanna break the cap, but I don't think we're aiming for three twenty-four, I'm thinking we're aiming for more than that, because I think we're still haven't even. This does not include any of the proposed raises.
We we put money in there for non-union and C S C A.
Okay, then if that is, then if that's like, it's okay, that means we'll a little bit better, but I just think. It just, that's just what worries me, that worries me, and I think. We haven't thought long enough, longer, harder, hard enough of what. That like, North, what that we said is, what is that project that Leilani is saying, what is that item that's gonna be like, we're gonna break the cap, we're doing X? I don't know. Yeah, I I don't think you've got the X yet, I I mean, I believe it, the only, uh, uh. I I I don't wanna get far afield, but I think that the 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 big project that that'll that'll come across down the road. That you'll wanna do would be water retention, like they're doing Hoboken with the with the big tanks under, under, under. You have to buy some property, bury a three hundred thousand dollar tank, and then, and then, yeah, I mean.
So is that like looking at the aquifer?
Yeah, yeah, looking at the aquifer, that 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 that's the kind of stuff you will probably, um, but you know, but that's not ready to go, and I don't wanna start from, I think you need to. To put the money aside to do that when it comes up. But I also think this doesn't think. It also doesn't include any substantial flood mitigation like dollars, and I know we budgeted some money for. River maintenance, but there's no large sum. That I think we should be budget, we should be budgeting for flood coordinator or flood administrator, whatever, I found a mission coordinator, right, cuz administrators.
Well, we don't.
What do I mean, we don't have a title, whatever that that, that looks like, that is that funded included in here, I think, regular routine. You know, actual maintenance with having a consultant come in and our, and our own people, like, if we're missing. Those who are the piece of death was included in here, and we were breaking the cap, and we had to break the cap, I'd be a little bit more comfortable.
Maybe it's a stormwater fee.
So again, am I the only one who just sat there and came up with some ideas? You're literally, we're all, we're just talking in a circle and not giving, you're just saying what we already know what we have to do. So what ideas, and accept a little, you came. His one, his one, is is joint. What is it? So what did we come to this meeting to discuss? What did we come to this meeting to discuss? Talking circles or to come up with ideas or to look at what we needed to act on, to omit, what did we come here to discuss?
I thought, I, I think we could down into the in in into the reserve fund as deep as we need to, and we come up with a bunch of fees. To to make up the difference next year. And I, and I, and it's, it's not gonna be popular, but I think that, I think that's, that's, that's the kind of structural change. That will, uh, that will, that will do well going forward, I mean, what do you say, I I could tell you don't, you're not wild.
I I I don't think going dipping into the reserve fund.
Then what?
Again, I think, I I'm sort of, I think we haven't thought the budget through. This is the, this is the most lackadaisical process that I've experienced in the, in the budget thus far in my. And I think that, and I honestly, I mean, I think that. We have a fund balance policy, I think we need to stick to it, we, we're, we're kind of close right now, so going dipping too, too much farther in. Is gonna prevent us from doing more flooding in the future. And, um, I don't really see a path to simply charging more fees to residents. It's agree, it's, it's just, it's a different kind of a disingenuous tax and. It's hard to implement, I mean, you know, I I don't know how you would possibly figure out a system of charging. My next-door neighbor a fee to go pick up their.
Everybody would pay.
People think they pay a lot of money.
Well, I know, but they don't, they're, uh, 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 okay, well, okay, so you don't wanna, you don't wanna, you don't wanna, uh, 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 pay for it, but what do you want to cut then?
You know.
You don't know, I haven't heard one suggestion, or, I mean, you you say every, over and over again, you say, well, we need to do more, we need to do more. What do you want to cut?
I don't know what I.
Then, 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 then. Then you can't cut anything if you don't know what you wanna cut. I can't even argue about it, I can't even say, yeah, good, let's cut it.
What about this process that you said is so last basic that is different from the processes that you did?
So, you know, usually, we do the, if we're gonna make a change, we do these yellow sheets earlier, and I'm not, listen, I'm glad that we have the yellow sheet now, I think. I I think that we didn't do a deep enough dive to think, to see, and you know, one of the problems with the tax cap. Is that the longer you stay with the tax cap, the, you know, it's easier to make, it's, the harder it is, it's easier to make the cuts in the early, in the early years. Fine with the tax cap, because you're getting rid of any fat that's in the budget, and we don't have a lot of fat in our budget, but I will say, our, if you look at, I mean, our budget has gone up. Fifteen million dollars. Fifteen million dollars in ten, thirteen million dollars in ten years.
You've been here the longest, why?
Well, because. I would say in. Right after the pandemic. There are two people who are not here who were big spenders, and I think they were spending, 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 spending. So it went up in twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, and then it went up a lot, and a lot, and a lot. And I think we've just spent profligately, and that's, and, and we're coming to the point where we're gonna have to think really deep and hard. And so, and, you know, I, I, if, in fact, the, um, today, the committee on the environment sent, like, we have a hundred and thirty-nine vehicles, we have a lot more vehicles than we had ten years. We just have. I don't, I don't wanna say, I, 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 this is not the best analogy, but maybe we have a more lavish lifestyle. We are spending more money as a village, and it goes up and up and up, and we increase, and we, you know, I mean, we're, you know, we, we. We kicked out our village historian, and we're renting a space for the village historian. To make room for, you know, a part-time attorney who's now not usually here anymore, we just.
We, we.
We, we've increased, we've just increased, and I'm not suggesting, I mean, I, I don't really wanna cut people, and I'm not saying that, but I'm saying we've gotten bigger. And now we're having to figure out how to spend all of these things that we've got, so, I, you know, I don't know what we cut. I mean, I think, you know, Leilani's point, we're spending, you know, we, we did these Christmas lights during COVID because people were stuck indoors, that was really fun. That's a huge amount of money, that's a really big expense, and we're, we're, we just. We, we aren't reevaluating and saying, okay, that was a great initiative during COVID, but we've got more lights, it's been fun, it's a fun thing to do, but it's two nights. And we don't make money. So, um, and we spend a lot of overtime for it, I think we have to think. Think outside the box.
Well, we'll cut the, uh, the tree lights. That's.
Well, I mean, that was Leilani's idea, I don't, I'm saying, I don't know, I'm just saying.
Yeah, but you can't say you don't know.
Lou, because you're saying increase fees, increase fees, do this, do that, and you don't really have a plan for it, you just think if you say it, we can increase the fee. You don't have a plan for increasing the fee, you have an idea for increasing the fee, I, my, my, I don't have a plan for cutting. I think that we have to look carefully and see how we.
Careful and see, or you're gonna be seven years. I mean, don't, don't snap at me, Nora.
I'm not snapping at you, I'm suggesting that.
I came up with that, with, with an idea to raise revenue, all right, and it's a reasonable idea.
Well, you came up with an idea to raise revenue, staff has suggested that it's not really implementable, so it may be a reasonable idea.
Thanks for your help.
No, but, but, but how do we execute it?
What's your idea, I, I.
My idea.
Yeah, I said, does anybody else have any ideas about raising revenue? Nothing, nothing, silence.
Because I'm, because I'm not sure that raising non-tax revenue is really the primary role.
You're not sure.
It's not the primary role of that.
I think what Lou was trying to see, Nora. Is that. While your concerns are valid, very much so. Then what? That like. That's why I asked the question, why are the year? If you, if nobody, if, if we didn't come to, we had, we said we're gonna come to this meeting and we're gonna discuss. The next step, we're gonna discuss the capital, we're gonna discuss the, 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 you know, if we're gonna go over the tax gap. And. You know. At the end of the day. Like, I, I'm, I, I have concerns, like, there was no accountability piece on your end, and you've been here the longest. I could easily apologize for anything that I did or did not do. But I have not even heard like one piece, and you've been here the longest. About accountability. You wanna say that this process has been last basic, and you said this is what we used to do, and I was like, you never even brought it up. So how, like, it's, it just, it's like. Who are you blaming? You blame, and I could say we blame all, and we could all blame each other, or we could all take the blame. But what are you coming with? If you have these concerns, to be honest, and you're, and I'm not saying your concerns are not valid.
So one of the things I've done, and, and I can, and I can pretty much take credit for this, is work with the budget committee to actually get a capital budget, which is not something that we had before we took office. I'm not saying, I, so, I, I'm, I'm. Everybody is. Everybody is working hard to try and make this budget work, but last year, especially last year. Our budget was balanced on unreasonable revenues. We're taking those revenues out this year, and we're still in a situation where.
You have to cut more, yeah.
Where we have to cut more, where the tax cap is limiting for us, and where we have a tremendous amount of increase.
Okay, but, but.
And, and we have a tremendous amount of, 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 we basically, almost all of the tax cap is being used up by. Required pension and healthcare costs, so that starts us at a point where we either have to initially. Make it a, we made the determination that we weren't going to pierce the tax gap, and that was a determination that got made in the beginning of the budget process. And so now we're in a situation where either we have to pierce the cap, or we have to raid the reserve fund. Um, because. And, and, and that's a conversation that maybe should have been. Had earlier, my concern is. If we raid the reserve fund more than, more than projected, and we've never done it as high as we're doing it now, we are not going to have funds.
To do a big project.
To do a big project, we are not gonna be compliant with our fund balance policy, because we don't quite know how much we're gonna get back. And, um.
And then you have to break the cap. And it'll be the only choices, right?
Yeah, and if we're, and if we're gonna break the cap, which I don't recommend. I'm really loathe to do it, it needs to be in a way that. Benefits the village long-term financially, and I don't think that, you know.
I was bringing it now, it's not.
I, I, well, I just think, okay, you know, we came to a meeting at seven o'clock tonight, and now we're discussing breaking the cap, and it's gonna be, it's what, nine o'clock? Right now, almost nine o'clock, like, that's not enough time to do it. Um, you know, I know we're. Supposed to meet, I mean, we, I don't know whether we should continue to work on the budget, we have another, we have another week, I mean, I'm, I know people. May not wanna do an extra meeting, um, but. We're scheduled to do this on the twenty-fourth, maybe we have another budget, we have a very light. Agenda on the twenty-fourth, maybe we can come up with a, a better, a better plan, um, and we schedule another meeting. For, um, Tuesday the thirtieth. Which is really the last minute.
That's a, yeah. Okay, the, the rental inspection. Uh, fee, right?
Hmm.
All right, uh, is fifty dollars an apartment?
Well, we, we haven't set a fee, it would be like either fifty or seventy-five.
Okay, so it'd be five, but, 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 um, uh. Could it be a hundred? I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm asking, just ask, I don't, I don't know what's, what, uh, uh.
Well, I, well, that, again, that, the. Realizing the revenue was predicated on the board taking a legislative action.
Yeah, yeah, whi, whi, which, which, which for some reason, we didn't do when, when it came up.
Well, because we were advised that it might not be, might not stand up in court, that was. Pimple, pimple. You know, there was, we were, look. You, was before you went here, that was. That was one of the concerns, so.
But before I was on the board, because it's come up several times, I've, I've been here two years. All right, so, so in any event, um, uh. You know, that, that's, that's, I mean, I, I don't think we need to. Look at that. You know, I mean, um. I, all through the budget process, I kept waiting for somebody to say, let's, let's eliminate this, let's eliminate that. Never heard it.
I said. What we should eliminate, so. I've already asked if there was anything in the, in the, in, in, in. The, in terms of activities.
All, all I heard about was.
The block party, that's a huge expense. The, the tree lighting, that ceremony, that is a big expense. Is it necessary, and isn't that, is not saying that it's something that we have to take away forever, it's maybe just for a year. And explain that. Explain it. Just explain it, this is why we have to do it. Don't just take it and not it with no explanation, this is why we came up, this is how we got to this point. And I'm sorry. But shifting the blame, like, we didn't do nothing. Or shifting the blame because we had to spend, and maybe we shouldn't have. Replaced vehicles, or buy more vehicles, or. Take care of, you know, one thirty-four, or take care of whatever we had to take care of. But things needed to be taken care of. Because if we keep on, if we kept on kicking things down again, it wasn't gonna get fixed.
I mean, my, my.
So, moving forward. Those are the things that I'm voting to sit there and, and, um, to decrease. If we're not gonna go.
I mean, the first meeting I ever attended, uh, uh, after the fourth, it was a, what, two million dollars to, to, just to. Be lousy or whatever, the, uh, the, uh, the old village hall because of the mold.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it was like, uh, out of that, I don't know. The, the, the cans, the cans were piled up the whole time.
I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make a suggestion that we, um, that we continue to work on this next week, and that we schedule a meeting. For Tuesday the thirtieth.
Hang on.
There's, um, there's nothing, there's nothing on the calendar except for, um. And there's an arts council program from three thirty to five on Tuesday, I know it's a little late, it's tight, it's late, but. Leilani will be back by then.
Oh, well, no, we're.
Tuesday the thirtieth.
Oh, yeah, it'll be.
Well, we're at the twenty-ninth.
On the twenty-ninth, we have the, the committee on open government meeting at six o'clock, so I don't know.
All right.
Um, I mean, that's probably six to eight, we could do it right after that.
That's essential.
Yeah, we're having Kristen O'Neil come down and speak.
That's essential, Lou.
What?
That's essential.
I'm coming directly from the airport, so I may be late.
You and me both on the twenty-ninth.
He's in the counter. I know it's the twenty-ninth, but I like it a little fuzzy, or.
Oh, you're gonna make it that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll be relaxed.
That's fine, Laura.
That's good, yeah, okay.
And then, what is the purpose?
So, right, so that means we still have to figure out time to work on the budget. Next week, now Leilani, I know you're away, are you away next week too?
I know, I'm here, I'm here.
Oh, I thought you were flying home, that's all.
Uh, no, no, oh, oh, no, on the twenty, I'm here till, till Friday. I have a long weekend in Florida.
Oh, that's nice.
Well.
I asked, I asked, if you're gonna, I can send my recommendations before I leave.
Okay.
Um, but I asked that if you're gonna do something, if you're gonna call this next meeting, actually come up with something. Because in this meeting was not purposeful.
But I think the goal is to, is to work on this again Wednesday, we're not adopting it, it's, it's same thing, we're gonna.
So we have our meeting on Wednesday, if we can, if we can make.
Yeah.
We're gonna start a work session.
Well, I, I, our work session's really short.
Yeah, no, I, I have a plan, but that's the goal, I think, then. And I, and I just wanna say this. I know fees are not, uh, are not. The end-all and be-all, but I, I, but I really wanna leave the property. Always, it's a property tax alone, and I know it's, it, it, I just, I just, I don't know what else. To do, where else to go, it, it, it's just a suggest, it's an idea, and it's, and what we do now is an anachronism. It will, and someday, it will change, we might as well do it now. And, 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 and people will be upset for a year, and then it'll go away. I mean, uh, 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 that's, that's what I'm saying, I, 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 I get you saying, I get it. I get it.
Laura, I can, this one's. It's, I'm just gonna mark it now, it's like, I don't wanna give.
No, we have to give it back.
They want the buy.
That's what it is.
You can have this back.
No, you can have it.
It's on the mark.
I have, I have a few.
Did you really give me two?
Yeah.
No.
Ridiculous, right?
Okay, so. I think so.
Oh.
No, I didn't.
You gave me two, um, two of the, uh, uh, two of the, uh.
Oh, that, the printouts.
No, no.
Oh.
Uh, no. No, no, what's happening?
Thirties meeting.
Yeah, you gave me two notes.
Oh.
I gave, I gave one of them to Alec Roberts, that's why.
Oh.
What's it to Alec Roberts?
Well, if, if you need, seriously, if you need them, just let me know, I'll get you, I'll get you.
I, but they're sitting inside on top of the thing, that, that's, those are, those are the.
These?
No, no, the, the, the.
The Luna.
The, the, the hundred tier stuff.
Oh. But if you need a, if you need a new budget, let me know.
I got, I have, I have a budget.
So, I, so are we doing this on the twenty-ninth, after the, or the thirtieth, I'm, I'm asking, are we doing it on?
Thirtieth?
We're gonna, we're gonna, this is really tight, let's, this is.
If the board fails to adopt a budget.
I know.
Attending the budget becomes the budget.
Right, yeah, so, um. Yeah, so do we wanna do it on the twenty-ninth at five thirty? Six o'clock?
No, she's coming six.
I mean, sorry, 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 the thirty, Tuesday the thirtieth, six o'clock.
Okay, budget, budget adoption.
I don't know, it's really.
I think the thirty, I think that's the.
It's really tight, right?
You have six hours.
Yeah.
I love a deadline.
Or do you wanna do it at eight o'clock after the committee on open government meeting?
Would you, you, you tell me?
I'm, I'm, I'm.
I think it, it. It probably serves as a do the twenty-nine, because I think the third, that's tight, like, you, you have whatever.
What's the difference, what's the difference?
You don't do.
If you don't take accountability.
As long as you do it by midnight and they first.
That, that's my worry, is that.
You and I have the worry too.
Yeah, like, I don't. That just scares me.
Okay, okay.
Going to be together on the twenty-ninth, why don't we, why don't we do it at like eight thirty, eight o'clock on the twenty-ninth, or it's, it's better to notice it earlier than later.
And listen.
Notice it for eight.
Yeah.
And. Having a gun to your head kinda clarifies, uh, clarifying.
And if there's.
Executive session is the work session.
Work session.
Oh, if people are on.
Doesn't know anything.
Big one person was on, Clint was on the floor.
Thank you.
Well, we have nine participants. Good job.
Thanks, Nora.
I'm sort of.
But if there's changes that you find, and you want, if you wanna email me, I can update this, or we can make a couple versions, and then we can see how it affects. You know, that's, I can bring that too. And if I find anything, like, like I'll remove.
Lesser of the Roberts. Yeah. We'll call, we'll call Dennis the lesser of the Roberts, right?